What you were talking about, these songs, remind me of a... I've related this before. Manager up to the hurricane call center. Roger O'Dell, good-hearted man. I'm not sure where he went to church at. But he related this story to me. He was late one morning and he sung in the choir and I... He was probably a good singer, I would imagine. And he said he was late one day. And he sat down beside an older gentleman. Roger said the feller couldn't carry a tune in a bucket. So, he said they sung two or three songs and he was getting aggravated. Cause he was trying to carry it, do the rock, you know, whatever all that stuff is. And about the third song, he looked over at that feller and he seen big tears. Roger said, "You know, here I am. I'm trying to sing the song and make it sound right. And do all the pitches and all that." He said, "Here's this man. It's affecting his heart." He's like, "That taught him a lesson." And that, what you were talking about, these songs, we cherish them. They're a comfort and a peace to each and every one of us. And we start with that 1:35. It's actually kind of amusing if we don't start with 1:35. And if we, for some reason, sing another one and then we go back and try and sing 1:35, we can't do it. It just don't work. We've done an act we want to. So, I don't know the why, but that's just how it is. There was one, I started with a question, but I'll just read it. I... There's a story to this. Library, I used to work in the library there at Marshall. And I found one of their books and it had old songs in it. And it was before, it might have been just when we started, back in 88 or 89. And I took it over to Dad and he was working there too, that's where he retired from. And he fell on this song. And he couldn't believe that this song was in there and it's in the Gatsby's. And we've sung it multiple times. It says, and this is what a little child God feels. It says, "Tis a point I long to know. Often causes anxious thought. Do I love the Lord or not? Am I His or am I not? And then if I love, why am I thus?" You ever ask yourself that? "Why this dull and lifeless friend? Hardly sure can they be worse who have never heard his name." That strikes home, Ron and Brian. "Could my heart so hard remain? Prayer task and burden prove every trifle give me pain if I knew a Savior's love? When I turn my eyes within, all is dark and vain and wild, filled with unbelief and sin." And I've got Mark beside that, "Me." "Can I deem myself a child?" You know, there's one point where the Lord is speaking to the... When He healed a blind man, over in John, I believe. Pharisees come to Him. He said, "Lord." They said, "Lord, are we all so blind?" That was a wonderful question that they asked. "Are we all so blind?" "Can I deem myself a child? If I pray or hear or read, sin is mixed with all I do. You that love the Lord indeed..." Here it is. "Tell me, is it thus with you? Yet I mourn my stubborn will that old man holds on to. Find my sin a grief and thrall. Should I grieve for what I feel if I did not love at all? Could I joy his saints to me, choose the ways I once abhorred, find at times the promise sweet if I did not love the Lord?" "Lord, decide the doubtful case. Thou who art thy people's son, shine upon thy work of grace..." Now here you go. "If it be indeed begun, let me love thee more and more. And if I love at all, I pray. If I have not loved before, help me to begin today." That's 2:83. "Tis a point I long to know." And that is a damn. And we have sung that. We've sung that many times, but it... I first came upon it when Dad found it in an old songbook, thirty-some years ago. I don't know if I need this microphone or not. I was told I didn't need it. Some people stopped me and they were on the third floor and they wanted John's number. "John, they may be calling you, okay?" So I don't know, you want me to leave it on or leave it on? Okay. You know, the Lord promised His apostles. They were very sorrowful. When He began to relate to them, it's in John 16. When He began to relate to them things that He must do. Acts 2 tells us, and to be honest, I don't really remember what I said so yesterday. So, if I repeat it, it's just meant to be. But apostles were sorrowful. Of course they were sorrowful. Their master was telling them that He must go away. But then He made a promise. He said that I will send... And if you think of it, what other description would you want for who our Lord was gonna send to His people than the word "comforter"? And that right there is the perfect title that these apostles... And He told them, He said, "You believe also in God, will believe also in Me." So, that spirit that we felt, that's that comforter that the Lord has sent down. And like I said, I believe I said yesterday in John 3, there's no man controls that. That's the Spirit of the living God that flows. It says, "Where two or three are gathered." And here we sit. And there's no other word, there's no one else, no one could have gathered, brought this together. No man could have, could ever do this. But it also says, "Two or three are gathered," but then it says, "In My name." You know, often, in this gospel dispensation that we're in now, I think we are... I'm gonna say simply, just to praise Him. If after I've spoke, I have declared, if I have declared how merciful, how just, how kind, how sovereign the God is that we worship, then the Spirit has been kind, that same Spirit that He sent. He said, "Don't be sorrowful. I must needs go away. But I will send you a comforter." And He says about that Spirit, He says, "He will not speak of Himself. He will tell you of Me," our Lord and our Savior. Turn back to Isaiah 55. It says, "Hold everyone that thirsteth." Now you must be alive to thirst. And what about those beatitudes? I believe I read those. It says, "Blessed are those that hunger and thirst." And what are they hungering and what are they thirsting for? Righteousness. It says, "Hold everyone that thirsteth. Come ye to the water." What waters is that? Our Lord made a promise over there. He was looking at His apostles, He was looking at them. And they were sorrowful because He said, "I must needs go away." Then He said, "I will send a comforter unto you. I must needs go away." When you look at that... At the preciousness of that blood. It was a redeeming blood. It paid, it paid. Job, Job over there, it says. It's in Job 14. Let's look at that real quick. Job 14th chapter. If a man, Job 14, and I'll start with verse 14. "If a man die, shall he live again? All the days of My appointed time, and they are appointed." And you go to Ecclesiastes 3 and He will tell you, "He sets the times and He sets the seasons. And many are those times and many are those seasons in the life of a little elect sheep, child of God." I believe I pointed to that yesterday. "And every one of them for a purpose that is worthy of himself. Every time and every season..." Whether you, when you are going through that season, whether He shows you that you are in that season or whether He don't show you when you are in that season. It is for a purpose that has been handed down by the hand of an Almighty God. It says, "The appointed time where I wait till My change come, thou shalt..." And that's why they call us hard. It used to be shells and maybe it is now, but it's a hard "shall." "We worship a sovereign God who rules and reigns on high. He says, 'I change not. I was the same yesterday, today, and He shall be for forever. And if He set something from before the beginning of the foundation of this world and He tells me that He changes not, then it has to be how our Lord set it before the foundation of the world.'" If He changed one time in one of the smallest events that you can bring forth in your mind, then that means He can change a million times. And our Lord has never changed. And if He set it back there and He appointed it and He said, "There's gonna be a season here and there's gonna be a time here and there's gonna be a season here," that's exactly how it will be. And it will not vary. He says, "There's no variance, nor is there a shadow of turning in the Lord that we have been shown." So when Job said there was appointed time, He kept that appointment. And so will every little elect and the non-elect. They will keep every appointment that has been put on their calendar by the hand of an Almighty God, each and every single time, no matter what. That's the Lord that we have been shown. And our Lord, He told those apostles, He said, "I will send a comforter." "For thou shalt call and I will answer thee. Thou wilt have a desire to the work of thine hands. For now thou numberst my steps; dost thou not watch over my sin?" All right, I'm gonna read that again. Soon as I get my breath. "For now..." So, "When is now?" That's pretty much present tense, ain't it? Am I wrong? "Thou numberst my steps; dost thou not watch over my sin." When John was talking, you go over to David and Bathsheba. "The Lawgiver can set it aside." That's what He said. That's exactly what He said. He set it aside. Now you read right here. "My transgression is sealed up in a bag and thou sewest up mine iniquity." He told Ephraim, I've got it wrote down here over in Hosea. "His sin is hid." He said, "My sin is hid." That's what the Lord, God Almighty, can do. For He is the Lawgiver. He was the one that had on Mount Sinai. It was His hand, it was His finger that come down and rode it in those tables of stone. And in like manner it is the same one that writes it in the tables of your heart. And when they nailed our Lord to that tree by the determinate counsel and the full knowledge of God, He brought it out. Colossians tells us, "He brought it out." He brought it out. All of those ordinances that were laid against us, He brought it out. It was His, it was the redeeming power of that blood. And yesterday, when we observed the Lord's supper, He said, "You do this in remembrance of who? Of Me." That right there shows you who it was. It was our Lord and Savior. He freely, like, when you go back to Adam. And he partook of that fruit. Adam was not deceived. He freely offered Himself up. He looked to his bride. Our Lord had, He laid Adam down and He put him to sleep because there was no work, man could do, no work in that. Our Lord just created everything. Don't you think He could have took a rib out of Adam without laying him down to sleep? He laid him down to sleep for a purpose. There was no work in Adam whatsoever. And then the Lord walks Eve over to Adam and He looks at her. He said, "You are bone of My bone and flesh of My flesh and you talk about vital union. Chosen in our Lord from before the foundation of this world." And there's a book over there in Revelations. And hallelujah, it's a book of life. That's what it is. And our Lord is not up there. He is not up there. He isn't subtracting names and adding names. Absolutely not. You were chosen in Him. And if you can grab on to anything, any security whatsoever, it is that right there. Our Lord said over in Hebrews 10, "Lo," in the volume of the book, "It is written of Me." That's what it's talking about. It's written of Him. He who freely offered Himself up. He done it freely. And who did He do it for? Those that were chosen in Him. That right there. It is a beautiful example. That right in the garden, in the beginning, right there it is. And that's what that Spirit shows us when it moves inside of us. And there's a birth. And there's a birth from above. "And he that hath no money..." Acts 17 tells us. He says, "He doesn't need anything. What does he need? What do you have? What do you have that our Lord needs?" He said, "Don't bring no money. You have no money." He freely offered Himself up. He commended His Spirit into the hands of the Lord. They did not take His life. John, there about two or three Sundays ago, and I may get to that. They pierced His side. Out come water and blood. He had already commended His Spirit into the hands of His Father. They did not take His life. It was by the determinate counsel and the full knowledge of Almighty God. That's the one. And when you have been shown, that little, that not little, that point right there. Oh, it's such a preciousness to a little child, a little elect. And He says, "You have no money to bring." There's no purchase there, not from us. The purchase was there. The purchase was there by our Savior. And He says, "Come, come ye by and come buy wine and milk without money and without price." Back to Isaiah 40. He says, "Comfort ye, comfort ye, my people, saith your God. Speak ye comfortably to Jerusalem and cry unto her." Now there's a word at the end of this, it's Isaiah 40 in verse 2. "And cry unto her that her warfare is accomplished and that her iniquity is pardoned." Two things. "For she hath received of the Lord's hand double." And it tells you what doubly they have received. The warfare is accomplished and her iniquity is pardoned. And you go right back there to Job. What are... He said he tied it up in a bag, he sealed it up in a bag. You know, Thomas, they called him doubting Thomas. Cause he said, it's over in John. He said, "Until I see the nail prints and his side," he said, "I won't believe it." So I think those two are connected in some way. That's the two things that Thomas wanted to see. And then our Lord came up to Thomas. Wish I knew where that was. John 20, let's go read it. Yeah. John 20, verse 24. "But Thomas, one of the twelve, called Dididimus, was not with them when Jesus came. The other disciples therefore said unto him, 'We have seen the Lord, but He said unto them, "Except I shall see in His hands the print of the nails and put my finger into the print of the nails and thrust my hand into His side, I will not believe.'" "After eight days again, his disciples were with him and Thomas with them. Then came Jesus, the doors being shut..." There's a lot there. "...and stood in the midst and said, 'Peace be unto you.' Then saith he to Thomas, 'Reach hither thy finger and behold My hand; and reach hither thy hand and thrust it into My side; be not faithless, but believing.'" Now these two, the prints and the side, there must be a connection between them. One was done prior, the nail on the hands was done prior to our Lord commending His Spirit. The second one was done after that He commended His Spirit. Showing that, so then you go back here. And He says that her warfare is accomplished. The nails in His hands, the warfare is accomplished. From their eyes, they seen our Lord there and they took it as a victory. We have won. We have killed him. We have accomplished it. If you go back through the scripture, you will see the multiple times that there was an attempt on the seed. Multiple times. I related last week, I believe, was Joshua. He's looking at Jericho, this, this, this massive city with these walls that from natural eyes, they, it looked impregnable. There's no way that my little band can destroy this city. It's not possible, Lord. And that right there goes back to that song. 'Tis a point I long to know. Here's Joshua looking at this city. There's no way, Lord, that we can take this. And he's off by himself and he's praying. And he, and he's bowed down to the ground. And he's praying. And then he looks up and there stands a man with a sword drawn. And Joshua asked, asked this simple question. Do you fight for us or do you fight for them? And all, all our Lord said, he said, "Who he was. I am the Lord of hosts." And then Joshua falls once again to his face, thanking his Lord and Savior. Because on that wall was a little lady and her family named Rahab. And a scarlet line that, that came down. And she was to be saved, she was to be spared by the hand of the Almighty God. And you go over to Matthew 1 and you'll read that name. That's, that's the God that we've been shown. That's the God that we worship right there. He set that from before the foundation of this world. And he said, "I change not." Those walls were to fall at the time that he appointed then him to fall. And they would fall then. And it don't matter, all the powers of all, of everywhere could have been assembled around and in that Jericho. And it wouldn't have mattered one bit for the sovereign hand of the Almighty God reached down. And he laid them walls down, except for that one little point right there where his little elect child was living. That's the God that we worship. That's the God that we've been shown. That's the God that Job said, "The times are appointed." And he is the very one that sealed it up in that bag. He is the one that went, when Nathan there. And he said, "Your sin, Nathan, David has been set aside." Because when you go over in Matthew 1, you will read of David, you will read, and you will read of Solomon. But there's also a name in there. And it is Uriel. It was set by the hand of the Almighty God. It's there. I don't remember where I was. You go over to Isaiah 40. For she hath received of the Lord's hand double. And Thomas said, "I want to see the nail prints and I want to see this." I believe that points to a Lord that commended himself up. And also points to a Lord that they did not kill by a spirit point. There are verses that point to those nails and that point to that, that, that spear being thrust in his side. And that goes over in 2. That the scriptures may be fulfilled. And they were fulfilled. Down to some soldiers at the foot of that tree, casting lots for his garment. And it says over here, if you look in Isaiah 40 in verse 11, here's another shall. It says, "He shall feed his flock like a shepherd." How many times have I heard John? He'd talk about, about times. A little sheep, like we all do. He may be over there. I remember that man saying one time. God, Lord reaching out and grabbing him by the collar. That happens. Happens to every one of us. But that shepherd will pick that little lamb up. And he'll take that cane. He'll snap its leg and then he'll set it. And then, then he'll pack that little lamb around for a while and he'll set him down to water. He'll set him down to feed. And that little lamb, this is my shepherd. And our Lord tells us, he knows each and every one of those sheep. Now, don't you think if that shepherd wasn't carrying that little lamb, that that shepherd also knew that sheep? There's a union there. And that's that union that John was talking about. It's vital. But aren't you thankful that it's eternal? Cause if it was up to this little sheep, it done been gone. Ain't no way you can be up to this one. How many times have I heard Dad say? Are you thankful? Are you thankful that there ain't a little ticker tape coming out the side of your head? And people reading your thoughts? Are you thankful about that? No, I am. Says here, "He shall feed the flock, his flock, like a shepherd." He said, "He shall gather the lambs with his arm and carry them in his bosom." Can you, can, can you shut your eyes and just picture that? How much love is there? The first one, the first one at the birth of our Savior, those angels, they, they didn't go down to the Pharisees or the Sanhedrin council or the scribes or the Sadducees and say, "Look over here, there's glad tidings." What is glad tidings? What is the gospel? It's good news. That's what it is. It's good news. It tells us of a Savior that is born and that, and that angel appears. And he appears to these little shepherd, these little shepherds. And they say, "Go over there and look in the manger and you'll understand what is happening." For that is where the priests would go over. And they would pick through the lambs. They would pick through the lambs and they would find the ones that were unblemished. That's, and then that's the ones that they offered for sacrifice. And an angel said, "You, you, you will know when you go over there and you see it." So those angels think about that. And those, and those shepherds, they go and they go running. And they go over there and there, and there they behold a new baby. And they know what it means. Here lays an unblemished child. This is our Savior. They were shown in the first one, the first ones that were shown that their occupation was a shepherd. And what, and what is the, what is the occupation of our Lord? He is as a shepherd. And he holds his sheep and he holds them in his bosom tight. And you go over to John 10. And you can have multiple flocks out there. But when that shepherd, he hollers only his sheep. Come, cause they know his voice. And it says, "If any, try to go up any other way. They are thieves and they're robbers. And what are they trying to thief and rob? The righteousness of our Lord and Savior and his work that he accomplished upon that cross." That's what they are trying to rob. He said, "I am the way. I am the truth and I am the life and I am the only door." That's who we've been shown and that's who we worship. And you worship him, and like I might have said that, you worship him only one way. And that is in spirit and in truth. For this is a spiritual kingdom. It is not a natural kingdom. It is spiritual. And when we are gathered like this or any other time or wherever, two or three are, are, are gathered and they are gathered in his name, it is by that same spirit of the Almighty God. That's the only way it can be. And that is the only way it is. That's who we worship. And he said, "Shall feed his flock like a shepherd. He shall gather the lambs with his arm and carry them in his bosom and shall gently lead those that are with him." His little assemblies, he knows exactly where they are. He knows what point where he has them. You know, I've, I've related this before. They have that, you all have seen that poem about the two sets of footprints. And it's a very common poem and I've rated, and I've related this before. And then it says there's two sets of footprints and then there's one set. You know, and that's when the Lord is carrying you. Well, I kind of differ on that. Cause I think there's always been just one set. I think there's just one set. There's never been two sets. There's times when he brings you to believe that there's two sets. That's, there's times. And that's those appointed times. But in those appointed times, he's still carrying you. His hands still, he's still got his little sheep. I'm going to end up over in Romans. Romans. I got enough breath left. Think I do? You can start anywhere, but I'm going to start with verse 13. Nah, verse 11. For the children, being not yet born, neither having done any good or any evil, that the purpose of God according to election might stand, not of works, but of him that calls. It was said unto her, "The elders shall serve the young." And as it is written, Jacob have I loved, but Esau have I hated." And I'm trying to make it over to a verse. For he saith to Moses, and this is the Lord, this is the God that we've been set forth. I pray that it has been set forth. He says, "I will have mercy on whom I will have mercy and I will have compassion on whom I will have compassion. So then, it is not of him that willeth, it's not by the works of man, nor of him that runneth, but of God that showeth mercy. For the scripture saith unto Pharaoh, even for this same purpose, "Have I raised thee up, that I might show my power in thee?" And like you all have heard many times, Pharaoh didn't know that he was being raised up for, 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 for a purpose. He had no idea that he was being raised up for a purpose. They were looking to their multitude of gods that, that, that they worshipped. He was looking to those gods when, when that unknown God, that, that Paul, that Paul declared to the, to the Athenians was raising him up for a purpose. That's the God that has been set forth. And then if you go back in Romans 8 and 33, "Who shall lay anything to the charge of God's elect? It is God that justifyeth." Who is he that condemns? It is Christ that died yea rather, that is risen again, who is even at the right hand of God, who also maketh intercession for us in the office of, of a mediator. That, when, 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 when Stephen was stoned, he was shown the Lord standing on the right hand of the Father. Who shall separate us from the love of Christ? Shall tribulation or distress or persecution or famine or nakedness or peril or sword, as it is written, for thy sake we are killed all the day long. We are counted as sheep for the slaughter. Nay, in all these things that he just listed, we are more than conquerors. But how are you more than conquerors? The next two words tells you. It's through him. That right there is the only way. That door, that, that, over in John, in John 10. For I am persuaded. Paul said that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor principalities, nor fires, nor things present, nor, nor things to come, nor height, nor, nor depth, nor any other creature shall be able. All of those things that he listed, none of those things shall be able to separate us. Oh, who is that us? Those elect, those chosen in him from before the foundation of the world. Nothing be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ, Jesus, our Lord. And that right there is where our comfort is derived. Right there. Nothing can separate us. Nothing. Nothing can separate us from that shepherd who's holding that little sheep, that little elect. It's a beautiful picture, I believe.